All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have four items on tonight's agenda, the first being the minutes from May 20th.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number two, approval of long-term stormwater management practices, maintenance agreement, Barton School Apartments. I believe Max Marshall has that one.
There he comes.
There he is. Perfect timing, Max.
Sorry for being late. I assume we're talking about the long-term stormwater management practice, the maintenance agreement for the Barton School Apartments. So this is a typical agreement that we sign with property owners once we approve or grant a stormwater management permit. So the project was the redevelopment of the existing Barton School Building into apartment units and townhome buildings on-site. And basically, we make sure that they provide best management practices in order to properly handle stormwater. And this agreement is to ensure that in the future, those best management practices will function as intended over time in order to control water quantity and water quality before it leaves the site. So this is a typical agreement that we have, and we recommend that the board and council approve this agreement for this project.
All right, thanks, Max. Any questions for Max?
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number three is award contract 19-04, install new sidewalk and remove or replace sidewalk at various locations. Max?
Thank you. So this is a recommendation to award our annual contract to repair and remove sidewalk at various locations in the city. This is one of the elements of our annual sidewalk program. For the past couple of years, we've bid this project with different alternates. This year, we have one base bid and three alternates. We're doing so because it's become harder to guess what the concrete prices will be. And it happened in the past where we would come with a contract with a certain quantity of sidewalk, but then if the bids were higher than we expected, then we had to reject the entire bid. With this system, we still are able to do some construction by awarding some of the alternates that we bid, even if the bid prices are higher than we expected. So we had a base bid and three alternates. The base bid basically covers locations where we had complaints from Tripp and Falls. So we're trying to resolve liability issues here for the city. And then alternate two, I mean alternate one, sorry, was for curb ramps. We're continuing our effort to meet the ADA requirement at the federal level. Alternate two, address some sidewalk at the northeast quadrant of Main Street and Decoral Road, as well as a couple subdivisions along River Road, just north of Paradise Drive. And the final alternate was the overflow of sidewalk that we were not able to address under the previous contract. So we received two bids on May 23rd, and they are listed on your memo. I have also provided a table with the various combinations of cost depending on the choice that we would ultimately make. And we would recommend to award the base bid, as well as alternate one and alternate three. And the low bidder in this is TP Concrete, so we recommend to award that contract in the amount of $108,360 to TP Concrete at the unit prices specified in their bid. And we also recommend a contingency of about 5.2% to establish a total allocation not to exceed $114,000 for this project.
All right, thanks, Max. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to go with TP, the base bid plus alternate one and three for $108,360.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. Item number four, accept municipal sanitary sewer easement. Max?
Thank you again. Washington County is in the process of splitting some land that they own on their campus just south of Washington Street. And the goal is to switch the ownership of this portion of land to the West Bend Little League. During the review of the certified survey map that they prepared in order to do this, we found that we owned utilities that were on the county land, but that were not within an easement. So we worked with the county to formalize the fact that the city would be allowed to enter the land and repair and maintain the line as necessary. And this is the purpose of this easement, that the county would be granting the city before the land changed its hand to the West Bend Little League.
All right, thanks, Max. Any questions? I'll look for a motion on that.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose, motion carries. But before I move any further, I accidentally switched these around. We still have the Pledge of Allegiance to do, so if anyone, please rise.
All right, with no further business between the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
We could switch out our Public Works Committee for our Finance Committee. Have a good evening, everybody, guys.
I call the Finance Committee for June 3rd to order. We have 11 items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the May 6th meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, and that motion carries. Item number two is a disallowance for the claim of Jane Towler. This is our typical disallowance so that the insurance companies can discuss. Rich?
I have one question on this one. Because I know this kind of has a long history, and the city was aware that there was work to be done. I know they cut some trees down and then now installed the storm sewer. So is this a little bit different than the normal ones where it's no diff-
I mean, the insurance has reviewed it. They're still advising us to deny the claim. So it might be, I mean, slightly different, but they've determined that, you know, we had met our ministerial duty in addressing the situation since we had, I assume since we had plans to address it. And as far as all the documentation, I mean, it is an abnormally well-documented claim with all of the attachments on there.
All right, I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign?
Aye.
Stephanie, should we do a roll call on this one, I think? Yes.
Alderman Jenkins? Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
No.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
Alderman Dagenhart? Or, I'm citizen member Dagenhart, sorry.
No problem. Aye.
Willa Cat?
Aye.
It passes 4-1.
Okay, thanks.
The mayor votes now, too.
Sorry?
I'm an aye.
So it's 5-1. Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. Item number three is a resolution transferring funds for the free summer picnic lunch program. Presentation by Craig Hepner. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. This one is transferring some money from one line item to another. As you know, we have the free summer lunch program at Regner Park, and as I always point out with the mayor, there's no city tax dollars involved. However, our salary count actually has $0 left in it. All the funding that comes in through DPI actually goes into this program supply account, so that's the one with $32,000. So we're asking for $12,000 to be transferred from the food, labor, or program supply account to the salary account.
Sounds easy enough. Any comments or questions for Craig? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the transfer of park funds for the Rolfs Dog Park Improvements. Again, Craig Hepner.
Tonight, we're asking to transfer $13,000 from our PARC fund, which is Park and Recreation Capital, to the Dog Park expense account. There's a large project going on at the Dog Park with new shelters being placed there, two new solar lights, and some ADA sidewalks, and some base concrete for the shelters. So we decided to assist a little bit. Normally, most of the funds come from the Dog Park account for all the improvements within the fencing, but they're spending a good portion of it, probably $45,000 this year. So we thought we'd assist them with the ADA sidewalk and the concrete bases to not deplete their entire Dog Park fund. So that's what we're looking to do, is for transferring the money from the PARC account to the Dog Park expense.
Excellent. Any comments or questions for Craig on this one? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number five is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department. Again, Craig.
We have another long list of some great donations by our community, so we want to thank the following groups and individuals. $150 donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club for Riverside Park Disc Golf Course. $500 donated by Bob's Main Street Auto and Towing, which is going towards the 2019 Movie Night in the Park. $750 donated by the Milwaukee Bucks for sponsorship of the 2019 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. They're also bringing Bango. $1,250 donated by Meyer for sponsorship of the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. $350 donated by Franz, better known as Bink Steinbach, for a city street tree. $400 donated by Cannon Cane Jewelers for the 2019 Movie Night in the Park. Another $400 donated by Shooting Star Travels for the 2019 Movie Night in the Park. $2,000 donated by Anytime Fitness for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. Total of $4,000 donated by the West Bend Friends of Parks and Recreation. $2,000, that was for sponsorship of Regner Beach Operations, and $2,000 towards a new AED unit for our beach. And finally, $5,000 donated by Russ Darrow Group, who are premier sponsors for the 2019 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. So again, the community's really stepped up, and we really appreciate all of their efforts.
Absolutely. We want to thank each and every one of those donors for the generosity. Any comments or questions for Craig? If not, I'll-
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Craig. Item number six is a resolution authorizing increasing appropriations for damages, cost recovery for the City of West Bend Public Works Department. With the presentation by Michelle Hoy, Human Resources Director.
So when we have, good evening. We have, when we have money coming in for Department of Public Works, for reimbursements, for repairs for traffic signals, signs, et cetera, we need to have a resolution approving money coming in. So we usually try to do a blanket statement. We increased our deductible, so that's why we're back here a few years later to increase that, or change it so we're not coming every couple of years if we change our insurance. So I'm looking for your approval, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any comments, or, I'm sorry, questions for Michelle? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing increasing the appropriations for damages, cost recovery for the City of West Bend. With again, Michelle. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening. This is for all of, all departments, and for anything that the insurance covers or that we get reimbursement from, say, subrogation. So we need approval for this as well.
So in order to get money, we have to do this. All right. Any comments or questions from Michelle at all? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Item number eight is the purchase of a 2020 tandem axle dump truck chassis. Presentation by Doug. Good evening, Doug.
Is this one working? There we go. Good evening. I'll make this as quick as possible here. Public Works is seeking approval for a tandem axle patrol truck. This unit will be replacing unit number 1086, which is a 2003 tandem axle patrol truck. The old truck will be traded in as part of this new purchase. Requests for proposals were sent out mid-April, and we received two back from the chassis portion, one from Lakeside International in West Bend, and one from Midstate Truck in Marshfield, Wisconsin. We received one quote back for the plow package from Burke Truck. That quote was good for both chassis, they quoted with both chassis companies. We are recommending awarding the purchase of the truck to Lakeside International and the plow package to Burke Truck. At a total cost, there is a slight change to that, I'm gonna have to get to that, but I've confirmed this afternoon and the past, we had received a discount if we put half the payment down on the plow package, and they did not have that stated in their quote. This afternoon, they did confirm that. We will receive a 1.5% discount on just the plow package, so it's roughly about $1,500 discount. So the total plow package with the truck is $190,309.03. Funding for this is $190,000 from our 2019 CIP funds, with the remaining 300 from our operating budget. Are there any questions?
Excellent. Thanks, Doug. Any comments or questions for Doug? Well, I'm kind of glad we're giving some business back to the City of West Bend, so... With that, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Item number nine is to approve a vacant land offer to purchase on 3.3 acres of tax parcel Ian?
So this is the written offer to purchase that is taking the letter of intent that had been entered into a few weeks, meeting or two ago, and actually turning it into an offer to purchase. It's a fairly general, clean, standard offer to purchase with an addendum attached that kind of addresses a lot of the contingencies and everything. The major contingencies are that we have to do a certified survey map, conditional closure of the DNR remediation site, and rezoning of the site if necessary. There's a general due diligence period in there, rather than get into all sorts of different contingencies for the buyer on a property that's essentially being transferred for the cost of a dollar. We have a general due diligence period that allows them to do whatever they need to do, environmental contingencies, get their, any licensing they have on the commercial side in line, et cetera, get a tenant for proposed buildings. It gives them pretty much open-ended due diligence through November 15th of 2019. We also address the development agreement. There's obviously a lot of work that needs to be done prior to finalizing a development agreement, but we kind of summarize the general terms we anticipate being in it. And finally, we state that the ultimate obligation to continue through to the offer is that there needs to be a full site plan sufficient for consideration by the December West Bend Plan Commission meeting, submitted honor before November 15th. The rest of it's mostly legalese, just addressing some of the general things. So if you approve this, we do have a signed copy from Mr. Stengel, so if you approve this, we will have Jay execute it, and then we will move forward with the process and come back with a final resolution, once all the contingencies have been met, and the, well, come back with a development agreement and the final resolution for the sale of the property at a later date, so...
Excellent. Thanks, Ian.
Yep.
Any questions? Yes?
It sounds like there's a number of unknowns in there, but that's with a letter of intent, that's typical.
Yeah, I mean, the letter of intent was essentially to lock down the property and give us time to, you know, figure the actual offer to purchase out. This is the actual, I mean, this is the actual offer to purchase. This is what we'll forward on for title. This is what'll, you know, be the basis of the deal, and this gives us a much longer period, but, I mean, it's been fairly standard, especially for that property, to have lengthy due diligence periods just because of the nature of the property. This isn't a, this isn't, you know, an old farm field that we're redeveloping into, something there's issues with the site, obviously, so...
That's great.
Rich, I'll abstain from discussion or voting on the item.
I should probably abstain as well.
Yes, we do. We have two, we have four.
Abstentions don't count against quorum.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions for Ian?
Oh, you said that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm new to this.
Yep.
So I don't, what type of issues do we have on that site? Is that going to be a problem?
I don't think so. There's, it's an environmental remediation site, so there's some hurdles, and the ultimate cap for the site will be whatever development goes on top of there. So there's, you know, some processes to go through. There's also just general due diligence by the buyer to make sure that, you know, they have the approvals they need, they have a tenant lined up, et cetera, before they lay out a whole bunch of money, so...
Okay.
Yep. It's just, you know, we have, in addition to those standard considerations you would have with any development, we have the backdrop of the environmental site, and some other things that we're doing, such as the bearing of the electric lines and stuff like that that are outlined in the agreement.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the vacant land offer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Ian. Item number 10 is to award the 2019 Lifeline Ambulance Contract to Jefferson Fire Incorporated. The presentation by Chief Kudick. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have before you a request to approve a RFP from Lifeline Ambulance. A little background, in the 2018-2019 cap projects, money was set aside for the purchase of a new ambulance. We sent it out to 10 ambulance dealers representing 15 different types of ambulances. We have three responses. If you look down the memo, the Lifeline and the Old Sage were the two low bids. We eliminated the Braun because it was the most expensive bid. We then reviewed the RFPs for completeness to our bid process, and both of them met all of the requirements, so we're suggesting that we go with Lifeline Ambulance. Unfortunately, all the bids came in higher than the 235 that was budgeted. So the game plan is to ask for awarding contract to Lifeline Ambulance for the 235. We'll take out the power cot, and we will buy that with funds within the fire department, probably from the Funding Assistance Program that's through the state of Wisconsin to purchase equipment or training, not budgeted. So we believe this falls into that category.
Thanks, Chief. Any comments or questions for Chief Kudick?
Actually, I have one question. So the state will pay for the cot, or that becomes state money, or?
Yeah, every year, we have to apply for an assistance program. What it does is it takes the number of EMTs and paramedics that you have on your-
Roster, and then you get a certain percentage. There's a formula that figures out every department that applies for it gets funding, and it's using this formula, this big pot of money that's in there, and then it gets divided out. We get about $4,000 a year, and we have a balance in that account that can cover the cot.
So it's not huge. It's not like we should be looking for equipment on other trucks that we buy to use the same program?
No. No, we usually save the money for buying EMS reflective jackets.
Gotcha.
Again, something that we, it has to be something that you don't have money budgeted for or can't afford. So this is, I think, fits in pretty well, since the bids came in higher than anticipated. We use the same number we used in 2017 when we tried to get it in 18. The cap project got moved to 2019, and we didn't adjust that number, and here we are at 235.
Thanks.
So you said we had, there's 11 ambulance companies, and we got three?
Correct.
Any reason we didn't?
Some we wouldn't have wanted to bid, but did it anyways to see what they would come in with.
Okay.
We're happy with the three that we did get, because those are probably the three top manufacturers.
Okay.
We thought they'd be a little more competitive, but they are what they are.
Yep. All right. Any other comments for Chief? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And finally, item number 11 is a resolution accepting a donation from Commerce State Bank. Again, Chief Kudick.
Yeah, we received a $100 check from Commerce State Bank. I think they provided these checks to every fire department that they have a branch in, so we're appreciative of that. They were thankful for the service that we provide for the citizens of West Bend and presented us with a $100 check. The check is going to be deposited into the fire donations account, which means we can use it at any point to purchase fire equipment.
Excellent. A big thank you to Commerce State Bank. Any comments or questions for the Chief? If not, all in favor, I'm sorry, I'll take a motion on the item.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Rich, and thank you, Finance Committee, if we could get the balance of the council up here for the licensing board. We gotta get digital.
We don't have. Stand under her, would you?
I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, June 3rd, 2019, to order, and recognize that we have nine items on tonight's agenda, starting off- and recognize that we have nine items on tonight's agenda, starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the Regular Medium of the Licensing Board from May 20th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is approval of the operators' licenses, and the list is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number three, secondhand article dealer license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is massage establishment license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number five is a six-month Class B beer license for the West Bend Baseball Association, West Bend Baseball, located at 800 North Main Street, Carl M. Cus Memorial Field.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item six is Class B combination liquor license renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item seven is reserved Class B combination license, liquor license renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight is an original Class B combination liquor license for Promotional Solutions LLC, Promotional Solution, Solutions, 140 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item nine is an original Class B combination liquor license for M&amp;J's Moonlighting LLC, M&amp;J's Moonlighting at 326 Commerce Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And being there, no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, June 33rd, 2019 to order, and recognize that Alderman Jenkins is absent and excused. We have 37 items on tonight's agenda. Item number one is a Capitol update by Representative Rick Gundrum. Rick, good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. What's happening in Madtown?
Thanks for having me. It's great to be here. I'll give you a sort of a general overview, because you do have the 37, or now 36 items on the agenda, don't want to tie you up too long, but, of course, everybody is aware we're working on the budget, but we are getting other business done as well. In fact, I'll just go over some recently passed Assembly bills. There were four pro-life bills passed recently in our last session, which was about a month ago. The Born Alive Abortion Survivors Act, the Sex Selective Genetic Disorder abortion ban, the Women's Right to Know in Form of Consent and Reporting Requirements for Induced Abortions, and AB 183, which prohibits taxpayer funds from being used to, excuse me, to fund facilities that perform abortions. Marcy's Law passed both Assemblies, or both the Assembly and Senate. That bill gives rights to victims of crime, puts them on an equal level with those that are accused of a crime that they're a part of. AB 76 reduces the training hours for CNAs from 120 hours, drops it down to the federal requirement of 75 hours. What this does is it gets the much-needed CNAs into the workforce sooner. It aligns our training requirements with neighboring states like Michigan, Minnesota, and Iowa, and certified CNAs relocating from other states who have had 75 hours of training can automatically step into the workforce and move forward without having to, you know, have additional training. Some of the bills that are being circulated, there's all kinds of them always going across my desk, but there's one here regards state mandates. It would be a bill that would require funding of state mandates and creation of a joint committee on state mandates as well, legislation to free local government from the costs associated with the unfunded state mandates. And upon enactment of the bill, would also create a legislative joint committee to address the state mandates. Bills that recently passed out of committee, there was the biannual budget bill that I authored along with Senator Koyenga. That allows municipalities and counties to have the option of a two-year budgeting process. It's not mandated. You don't have to join up right away if you don't want to, if you never want to. If you try it and don't like it, you can opt out. But what it does is it allows for more efficient program monitoring and evaluation. The first year of the biennium would be devoted to budget action, and then the second year would be for enhanced long-range planning and strategic planning. So that should be becoming before the Assembly in our next meeting. Hopefully, we can move on with it. Also, we had the Study Committee on Property Tax Assessment last summer. That's the Dark Store Study Committee. I was a member of that. Three bills were voted out of that committee, and they should be going before the full legislature sometime this session. Number one, it allows taxing jurisdictions to form cost-sharing agreements to help cover the cost of assessments, so you could have city, school board, county, and tech college all share in the expense. It also potentially gives you a bigger fund resource to fight these challenges in court should they go there. Second one allows an assessor easier access to documents for complete financial information on a certain property before completing assessments. If documents are requested and the taxpayer doesn't want to give them to the assessor, then they lose the right to appeal later on when the assessment comes down. It also kind of gives the assessor a better tool to have in their arsenal for doing a better job of assessing property, so you don't have to have an appeal. Establishing uniform timeliness and procedures for objections to a property tax assessment, that's SB 96, that was the third bill. It eliminates confusion that currently exists in the courts, also steps up the process so that you aren't lingering on for a year or two before settling on assessed property. So those are not a total fix-all, but it's a start. It's a useful tool, but I still feel that the ultimate solution lies in the legislation that was introduced by Senator Strobel and also Representative Brooks, and that is SB 130 that has been reintroduced. So hopefully, we'll get some traction on that. As we move on to the budget, the Joint Finance Committee is putting together a very responsible budget that's going to meet our needs without raising taxes. We're on target of meeting the goal for having a budget for the governor to sign by the end of June. Some of the items that have already been voted on by the Joint Finance Committee are education. They're proposing to increase the education budget to an historic level of $12 billion, being focusing on special education with an increase of 13%, adding over $20 million for student mental health services, increasing the base for those school districts that receive low revenue aid, and also increasing per pupil aid from $200 in the first year and $204 in the second year. Transportation is just being discussed right now. The Joint Finance Committee is going to be meeting again twice this week. They'll be taking up transportation and also health services, healthcare. But for transportation, there is no appetite for a tax gas increase, or gas tax increase, I'm sorry. And there is focus on funding, at least discussion on trying to get more funding for local roads, and there is pressure being put on by some of the legislators, so I think we might be seeing something there. UW system, we want to keep college affordable, so tuition for undergrads has been frozen for two more years. Since we've been freezing tuition, the average student has been saving about $6,000. Tourism, that's one of the top five industries in the state. In fact, last year tourism had a $21.6 billion statewide impact, and $40 million has been proposed for increasing the tourism budget. Corrections, it's being proposed that we give an across-the-board salary increase to corrections officers, not just cherry-picking certain institutions, but all corrections officers, and that could have an impact overall of about a 14% increase. Proposed an increase in the number of prosecutors statewide, improving the compensation for prosecutors and public defenders, and also raising the rate of pay for private attorneys who take public defender assignments. And then workforce development with historic low unemployment rates and skill worker shortages and demands. The Finance Committee has targeted $12.5 million to programs in high demand, including career and technical education grants, the youth apprenticeship program, and also technical education equipment grants for schools. So when all is said and done, the JFC's proposed budget will probably pass in the Assembly and Senate. It's target, on target, so that'll be taking place probably in the last week of June when the Assembly and Senate will meet and vote on the budget, and then hand it off to Governor Evers, so he can have it by July 1st. Now, it'll be up to him to approve, and he's gone on record saying that the only budget he plans to approve is the one that he has proposed, and so we'll just have to wait and see. I know he's backed down on some of his things, like he lightened up on his thing with Foxconn. He was going to really put the pressure on them, and now he's talking about maybe not doing a gas tax, so we'll see. Any questions?
Thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick? I've got one comment. There aren't any other questions? Jumping back to Dark Store, and thank you for, you kind of went into office in the middle of the Dark Store discussion, so thank you very much for taking the lead on it. I've got one suggestion for Senator Strobel and Representative Brooks, and that's in regard to public schools and the tech colleges. They've largely been out of the discussion, you know, it's been municipalities and counties, as you know, that have really gone to the forefront, but it, the potential to be equally detrimental to the public education is there, too, and I think it would be powerful to engage public education in the discussion. Some of the math we've done, some of the liability and exposure that West Bend District has, it could be the equivalent of two, three, four education positions if things really go south. So along with encouraging those two, and your leadership in particular, to get this thing to the floor for a vote, I think it'd be powerful to reach out to the education systems and get their input on it, too. Other than that, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, has a certificate of honor recognizing West Bend Mutual Insurance Company for 125 years of service. If I could ask Chris Zweigert, West Bend Mutual's Chief Legal Officer, up to the microphone here for a sec. We are on. 1894. 125 years of West Bend Mutual serving your customers, serving your policyholders, 125 years of being an awesome place to work, and 125 years of supporting this community. Yesterday was just one of hundreds of examples. You opened up your campus to the Boys and Girls Club 5K Run for Kids. Awesome day, awesome event. I can't think of a single nonprofit organization, school board like yourself, can't think of one area, one corner of this community where there isn't at least one, and many times multiple representatives from West Bend Mutual. So not only congratulations on the success of an outstanding business, but for really being the gold standard, I'd say, in the state of Wisconsin, if not the nation, for supporting a community. Thank you very much on behalf of a very grateful community. One small token of our appreciation. Thank you. You bet.
Mayor, thank you very much, and to the members of the council. I speak on behalf of all of the employees and the policyholder owners of West Bend Mutual Insurance Company when I say how humbled we are by this recognition, and how proud we are to be corporate citizens of such a strong, vibrant community. Over the past 125 years, we've had the opportunity to forge many different relationships, and I can't think of one relationship that is stronger and certainly longer standing than our relationship with this city that we call home. And we certainly look forward to opportunities to continue to strengthen and cultivate that relationship in the future. Thank you again.
Day down here is item number three is oath of office, appointment of Matthew Casey to the position of firefighter and paramedic, and ask Assistant Chief Beistel and Chief Kudick to take over.
Good evening. We're excited to introduce to you tonight our newest firefighter, Matt Casey. Matt Casey comes to us from the Green Bay area. He lives in Green Bay. He used to work for the County Rescue, which is a Brown County paramedic service. He also worked part-time for the fire department for the Village of Howard, so we're excited to have him. He received his paramedic associate degree from Northeast Technical College. He also served in the military, where he received the Army Achievement Medal as he was deployed overseas in Guantanamo Bay. So welcome to the City of West Bend. His dad, Steve, is going to do the pinning.
I, Matthew Casey.
I, Matthew Casey.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
In the City of West Bend, Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations once again, firefighter, paramedic Casey. Thank you for your past service to our country, your future service to West Bend. Looks like you've got a very proud family there. Look forward to good things. Item number four is approval of the minutes from the Regular Medium of the Common Council dating back to May 20th, 2019. Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. I don't know if the folks watching at home can tell on TV, but we have a group of high school students here either gaining extra credit or some last-minute regular credit for, I'm presuming, a social studies class, and they were probably horrified to hear that we have 37 items on tonight's agenda. So fortunately for them, we can take items five through 23 together.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 24, airport hangar lease termination agreement and airport hangar site lease, lot 15, Claybough to Cassin's Cas, something like that. Cassinkas.
Close enough.
Mark Petrovich, Development Director, has some information for us.
This is our standard two documents that we do every time there's a transfer of a lease from one property holder to another. Clayboughs have sold the, or have a pending sale for the airport lease lot and hangar. The city, these are our standard forms, have all the standard FAA requirements. The transfer of the lease was recommended to you by our City Airport Commission, and we'd... we asked for the approval of both documents.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five is a public hearing regarding a junk dealer's license for Quincy Recycle Paper Incorporated, Quincy Recycle Paper, at twenty-two thirty Stonebridge Circle. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion of the maiden seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item twenty-six is granting of a junk dealer's license for Quincy Paper Recycle Incorporated, Quincy Paper Recycle, twenty-two thirty Stonebridge Circle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item twenty-seven is library slash recreation center update, and we welcome back Park Rec. and Forestry Director Craig Hepner.
Good evening again. We just wanted to provide an update to a project that we've been working on, kinda behind the scenes, and bring it out to the public and to the council. The Park Rec Commission and staff is working with the Library Board and staff on a potential joint project to use the basement of the library and put that into some programming space for the community. This is because mostly of the, due to the impending sale of the Mutual Mall, where none of our Recreation Division programs are currently housed, and so we're looking for some space. The idea came up because the library's been there for, the expansion, I think's been there close to twenty years, and right now it's mostly a graveyard for furniture, so, and some storage space, we're looking at potentially using that. We developed a preliminary design with Zimmerman Architectural Studios, which would have a dance studio, some multipurpose rooms, an art or classroom, a small conference room, some storage, and restrooms. If the project does move forward, we'd like to contract with ZAS to complete the final design and specs, as they've, were the ones that designed the West Bend Community Memorial Library Expansion, and our departments worked with them on a number of projects. Do you have the cost estimate listed in your pack, and I think you also have a preliminary plan? The cost estimate right now is four hundred thousand dollars for Phase One. Phase One is just the dance studio, one multipurpose room, some storage, and restrooms. We're very confident that that number is a little high, and for us to be able to do that as a general contractor, and I think there's some cost engineering that has happened already, the number's probably closer to three hundred, and we hope maybe even a little bit less than that. We have met together on both the commission level and Park Rec and the Library Board to talk about this project a few different times. Both entities are very positive on the idea and want to move forward, so what we've done now is formed a small committee of members of both the Library Board and the Park Rec Commission to do some further talking and discussing, reviewing the floor plans to get to a final plan, discuss funding options, and discuss the future, what would be utility costs, maintenance costs, and the potential for rent revenue. In fact, our next meeting would be coming up this week on Wednesday. We certainly, a lot, the biggest question is funding, and we certainly don't have an answer for you tonight, but there's a lot of different possibilities between library funds and some of our Park Rec funds, including the Recreation Fund. Amy is here as well from the library, if you have any specific questions for her, I'll be happy to answer any kind of questions you may have at this time.
Questions for Craig? John?
Craig, do you know offhand, would that, would that, once it's completed, would that be available for outside, for rental?
I think there is that possibility. Right now Recreation use, would look at using it afternoons, four o'clock to eight o'clock or so Monday through Thursday. I know the library's interested in using for some of their programming, but certainly there should be some time available that that potential could happen. Things we do have to deal with though is security and access to the building, so how to, if it's our program is one thing, but if it's somebody from the community coming, whether it's security, keys, how to get into the library, not a library, and not get into different parts of the library, is something we'd have to discuss. So, I think the potential's there, but our first focus would be on rec programs and library programs.
Thank you.
Craig, is there any plans to offer direct outside access to the basement, or will that continue to be through the library?
I think right now the ideas go through the library, but again, that's what I think this committee's gonna talk more about, and Amy knows the building much better than I do. But there is an elevator access or stair access that could happen from the lobby of the library without going into the library, but it also connects to different parts of the library, so that's what we're trying to flesh out.
Craig, the square footage that you have for different levels of the work, mechanical, for example, is it correct to assume that the mechanical system would include not only Phase One, but that'd be Phase Two and possibly Three, depending on how many you have? So you are knocking out some of the overall work in this Phase One?
Correct. The, the mechanical would be taken care of through this Phase One, and a little bit more of the plumbing, there shouldn't be much more plumbing than the restrooms, but we also have to look at fire protection with the sprinkler system. So basically, I would say this is broken into two phases, so we're talking Phase One now, a second phase. We have had Zimmerman come through the library, and they feel pretty confident on the heating and cooling that we're very close to having capacity to add to it, but their biggest question would be ventilation with public space, and that's the question mark on some of the cost as far as the mechanical part.
And then FFNE, furnitures, fixture, that kinda stuff, I didn't see a line item for that. I assume there's not a lot in a dance studio, but as you get into classrooms and whatnot, this, I'm sure you're anticipating that's a pretty significant line item at some point.
Right, certainly chairs, tables, other things, that, you know, putting in a dance floor is gonna be costly, but that's also included in this cost. You know, we, what we wanna do is make this nicer than what folks go to currently in the basement, people have been in the Mutual Mall. I mean, our, our little dance studio's pretty small, this would be about double the size of that. We might say it's nicer that when people come here, they say, yes, this is a great place to be for our kids and a safe place to be. So whether we have to start with some basic, hey, we're bringing some furniture over from there, again, we're not, probably talk to some donors about some of those kinda things, where we can add on some of the niceties.
I think it'd be ultimately nice to see an ROI, you know, if, if the library can offer some more classes, events, that type of thing, if you would, you know, anticipate increasing revenue, increasing participation because of this, I think a analysis that any other business would go through when they're looking at building out more space probably makes some sense. Other than that, I'd say good luck meeting with your committee and look forward to seeing it back. Anybody else? Hit Rich?
Craig, are there other alternatives that you looked at besides this basement at all?
We have. First off, we looked at our own space, we do have a, you know, if we think about the Marin Center at Lock Loran, Riverside, even the Beach House to a certain extent, so we could piece things together, but I don't think on a long-term basis. We've also looked at our, the Beach House project as that moves forward, do we make that some, we have a plan for one multipurpose room, but do we expand there? But that's probably at least two years down the road. And we've talked to the school district, that's certainly probably the, the one that comes to mind first. They're pretty well-packed with their own programs, we are in there in certain times, but to get additional space is almost impossible there. And just general leasing of different properties, everybody says, hey, Shaco's open, Boston Star's, Boston Store's open, sure, but it's, it's a bigger cost. So that, we're even looking at, like, giving the library some money towards rent potentially, and so that has to stay somewhat minimal for us to even make it, make sense financially. But, so we do think this is definitely a win-win for the organizations, the library certainly sees the impact potential with more customers, we see cross-marketing and getting more participants also with the recreation programs.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Thanks, Craig.
All right, thank you.
Item number twenty-eight, disallowance for claim of Jane Towler.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Steve, could you please handle item twenty-nine as I'll abstain from discussion and voting?
Prove vacant lot offered to purchase, three point three acres of tax parcel, two nine one dash one 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 nine dash one three two dash zero zero five five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries.
Thanks, Steve. Item thirty is a discussion regarding new municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4 permit issued, and presentation tonight by City Engineer Max Marishell, welcome back.
Thank you. So you may remember that last year I had come to council and in anticipation of the renewal of our municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4 permit by the DNR. So, under the Administrative Code Section NR two sixteen, our community is required to obtain coverage under this Wisconsin potent discharge eliminating, elimination system, municipal stormwater permit. The city's been permitted since two thousand and nine, and the permit is renewed every five years. So the permit arrived at, to expiration on April thirtieth, and was renewed by the DNR on May first of, of this year. We had to reapply last year, which is when I came to discuss the permit. At the time, we were not sure of the new language or the new elements of the permit, but now we have it, and I wanted to give you a presentation of some things, some of the things are pre-existing in the permit, where maybe they were changed a little bit, and there, we have new elements as well. So, I'm trying to summarize about a sixty-page document here, so it's a long memo, I'm not going to read it word, word for word, so I'll just go over the main items, and if you have any questions, just let me know. So, we are required to develop a program in the five-year life of the permit, and it, it goes with eight steps. The first one is public education and outreach. So, this is an item that was already in the permit, but we need to implement new steps, and we need to have written procedures. There's a list of those, those items that we need to, to implement in the memo. The second element is public involvement and participation, where we need to be more interactive with the community and offer them opportunities to comment on the permit itself and the programs that we implement as part of this permit. There are some things like volunteer activities, we've done in the past with the stenciling of the catch basins where some groups like the Boy Scouts or something would paint the little fish, we need to continue those, those efforts. The number three is the illicit discharge detection and elimination, so that's an effort we've been pursuing with the, the help of our Department of Public Works. We have to inspect discharge pipes that go to the river, so there are some specifications, given the size of the pipe or the location, so there were some tweaks to that in the new permit, so we'll have to adapt our new list of discharge points, and we'll continue with this program. Construction site pollution control, so we may have to do some update to our ordinance. We definitely have to develop more written procedures under the, the new permit, and especially on tracking complaints and how we address them. Then the next item is the post-construction stormwater management. It's the same thing where we probably have to add some language to our ordinance, establish new written procedures. And the next item is municipal stormwater pollution prevention. This one is mainly for the daily operations and maintenance of city-owned facilities, such as, you know, the, the yards on municipal drive or other properties owned by the city, our storm sewer system, et cetera. Stormwater quality management, this one is to meet the compliance with NR one fifty-one. So, we, we do some modeling, and so we need to update our model to make sure that we still meet the twenty percent total suspended solids carried from stormwater. And the last item listed is the storm sewer system map, which we developed from the get-go under the initial permit. We've been updating as we've modified our, our storm sewer system, there were some additions, some removals, relocation of storm sewer, so we'll, we'll get the map updated as we go, we continue that. And then with the new permit, there are other requirements, additional requirements, especially with the total maximum daily load, which deals with the total suspended solids, the total phosphorus and fecal coliform, which is bacteria, that can enter the Milwaukee River. So we'll have to study the entire city and figure out through a model where we are with all these, all these items, and we need to develop some plans to reduce the pollution and improve the quality of the water that we discharge to the Milwaukee River. So, we started working with a consultant and with the sewer utility plant, because they, they also have a permit with discharge, so we can probably have some cooperation there and, and help each other, mostly them helping us, I think. So we'll come back to you with, with more, more information on that matter. The last thing I would like to point out is that with these new requirements, we may have an impact on the staff, which means we'll have new tasks, we'll have new things to do, we'll have to work on maybe getting some help. Obviously, when we develop the plan to improve the quality of the water, we'll come up with some cost estimate on some projects that we need to do, whether it's putting a new pond somewhere or some type of device within some project. So obviously that will in fact affect the, the budget once in a while, and also we'll have to regulate new development, future development, for them to match the new requirement of our permit. We've been doing that with our stormwater management permits, where we make sure that they implement best management practices. With the additional requirements on the permit, we may have new rules or tweaking the rules that we have in place as, as we move forward with this. Do you have any questions, or you can digest it and ask me questions at a later time, that's fine too.
My only comment is thank you for enjoying this kinda thing. Major changes, minor changes, you used the word tweak a couple of times, I, you know, I'm very familiar with our approval process, and it seems to be very similar, if not, you know, a little more caretaken than many other communities, so I can't imagine that they looked at us and we had a, got a black eye from anybody.
No, I think as far for the development part of it, the, the changes might not be as, as big as for our own operation. I think we'll have, we'll see probably more information will be required. We've seen since we became a MS4 community, we have those agreements, like the one I presented earlier, and so we do one every time. Now, we may require more, more information as far as the as-built condition of the site, and, and maybe more, I don't know, some testing is going to come along the way, things like that. But talking already with the DNR and with some consultants, the, the goals that are in the permit for the TSS, the total suspended solid reduction and the total phosphorus, are in my opinion astronomical, and some people have said impossible to meet. I think what we need to do is develop a plan showing that we're progressing towards that goal, and, you know, if we meet it in twenty years or two hundred years, I don't know, but we'll try.
That's maybe one of the unfunded mandates that Representative Gundry was just talking about, it's easy to snap your fingers and think something looks... It's easy to snap your fingers and think something looks good in Madison until you recognize, you know, what a challenge it might be to implement in a community that's already being pretty cautious, I think. Thanks for diving in and thanks to your staff.
Thank you.
Item 31 is a presentation by Director of Park Rec and Forestry Craig Hepner regarding a request for Historic Barton Business Association naming of a park area. Welcome back Craig.
Thank you. That was a hard act to follow. The Historic Barton Business Association and the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department are seeking to approve officially the name of what we call currently the upper overlook area of the riverfront Parkway to Firefighters Memorial Bluff. Jeff Sloss, who is representing the Historic Barton Business Association, made a presentation to our park commission a couple of months back and wanted to honor one of the fallen firefighters who used to actually own the land. So we decided to have a meeting and Justice was there, the fire department, Jim White and myself talked about probably making this a little bigger of a deal. So after considerable discussion and careful consideration, I decided to present the name of Firefighters Memorial Bluff. And there'll be a plaza area up there that would have actually the flag from the Barton School with a nice area to honor both firefighters that have lost their lives on duty and certainly recognize their lives. We'd also put underneath the Firefighters Memorial Bluff sign a quote that says honoring Barton and West Bend's bravest. And we're looking to do this in coinciding with 150th anniversary of the fire department this year. So planning to put this all together for the summer and have it done by the fall or September of 2019. So tonight we're looking to do is approve what the park rec commission approved last month is to name this area of the park, the Firefighters Memorial Bluff.
Awesome idea Craig. Any questions or comments for Craig? Justice, thanks for taking the lead on this. Entertained a motion.
Motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Thanks Craig. Item 32 is entertain a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is to review a letter of intent, city-owned land in TIF 12, the southern 4.45 acres of tax key 2.91.1119.132.0055.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Stephanie, if we could do a roll call.
Alderman Butchlook.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kiss.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Any high schoolers out there who I have not signed off on your form, you're off the hook, I can sign them right now and you can count it good. Are we coming back here?